Commissioner Malone, if you want to, do you have your mic on?
Yes.
So Vance, you okay, or do we need to wait?
Oh, I'm fine.
Okay.
My mic's off, you can't hear me, my ring.
Okay, we're ready. We'll go ahead and get started with our combined work session and board meeting this morning. We'll start with introductions. I'm Pat Malone, Benton County Commissioner.
Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Vance Carney, County Counsel.
Lilia Neville fixing her, my computer.
Lilia Neville, Board of Commissioners Office.
Okay. Who do we have go to meeting?
Zanow, Road Commissioner.
Mary Ottley, CFO.
Don Dale, Benton County.
Laurel Byer, County Commissioner.
David Malone with Benton County Engineering Survey.
Owen Muller with Benton County Service, Engineering.
Yes, Annabelle, RBO on the phone, Park Commissioner.
Greg Brother, Scott Jackson, Sheriff's Office.
Rachel Carly, Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
Eric Mimo, Board of Reporter.
Okay. I think that's everybody. And welcome. And are there any announcements? Hearing none, comments from the public. All right. Moving on, review and approve our agenda.
Commissioners, I would just like to interject that after the public hearing that is scheduled, we'll then jump to the Emergency Response Policy Team discussion. I need to be taking advantage of Charlie Fountain's availability today during a certain window. So we'll jump to the Emergency Response Policy Team discussion with Danielle and Charlie about 9:45 this morning. And that's just to accommodate schedule. So I just wanted to make sure the board was aware that I was having to change things up a little bit there.
So item 10 will come right after our public hearing.
And just to remind the board that you do have two service district attendants following everything.
Right. Any other comments on our agenda? All right. Item four, chair decisions. I don't think I've made any since our last meeting. And so we'll go on to item five, 5.1, discussion, discuss formation of Judy Lane reimbursement district for road improvements. Gary Stockoff and Paul.
Great, this is Owen, I'll take this one. So, couple of things. So I guess, back for it, the applicant, which is Jeff, who is looking great, Doyle, they, Judy Lane is outside Alphard, and back in 2010, they started, they owned, let's see, I can't remember, they owned something like 14 lots. They ended up, they did extensive road improvements, and those road improvements not only benefited their lots, they benefited other lots at the end of the road that would have needed those road improvements as well. So the applicant is requesting for Chapter 35 of Benton County Code to form a reimbursement district. And that would, the result of that would be the remaining parcels out there to develop when they, when they apply for permits. Instead of paying the county and doing road improvements, they would, that money would go to reimburse the original developers. A few things that have come up, so as part of this process, we had a mail, certified mail to the affected properties. And I've heard back from the applicant, one other affected properties, and then I have not heard back from the third, which are, I've got a lot of papers in front of me. So lots, lots 75 and 76 were tracked. I've not heard back from them, they have a PO box. We sent it on the 10th, arrived on the 13th, but with the pandemic, I'm not sure. I talked to Teresa about it, I'm not sure if they have had adequate time to check the PO box. I've heard back from, I heard back from two of the three. I believe that, and then the other thing I didn't notice this morning, while I was trying to log in, and maybe somebody has to answer for this, I'm new to the GoToMeeting, the access code and phone number that we sent out, at least in what I received from notice of public hearing, the numbers don't match up with this. So I don't know if there's an issue there, I don't know if we need to postpone this decision or not. I would kind of post that to Board of Commissioners in advance to see what they recommend.
So Owen, so are you talking about the notice for this meeting?
No.
Yes.
So, and you're saying that the phone number and the information does not jive with what you called in today?
Correct. Yeah, I was trying to get connected, and then I talked to Laurel, and the agenda, the subject on this agenda did not match up with what we sent out.
So, I'm gonna kick it over to Teresa. They typically do jive, don't they, when we publish this information? And in, I presume, Teresa, on the webpage, the call-in information is this meeting for today? Do you know if that's the case?
I do not know off the top of my head, but I'm surprised if they don't match. I know that early on, we had problems, but I was verifying each one, so it, I, I don't know what to tell you on that. I will double-check right now to verify the information that I've sent, Owen, previously, to make sure that they were the same ones that we had today that we're logging in. And I'll get right back to you.
Teresa, this is Lilia. I can confirm that what's posted onto the Board of Commissioners website in the packet as well as in the agenda is what was in the Board of Commissioners' calendar meeting.
So, we're good to go?
But, but that's not what Owen sent out.
Oh, you always send out a different.
So Vance, I think this is a problem.
I think this is a problem as well.
I mean, if we didn't provide the proper connection information.
So, we can do one of two, we can do one of two things.
Is the notice of public hearing in there? I was trying to ensure it this morning, but I didn't.
So Owen.
Yes, it is in there.
We can do one of two things. We can either pull the public hearing from the meeting, or, and then reschedule it and make sure the notice is correct. Or, we can open the meeting and recess it until we can get the proper notice. My preference would be to pull the meeting from the agenda, reschedule it, renotice it, re-post the information, so that everything is consistent.
That way it also gives time for the contact of the other people maybe to put in their response also.
Okay.
And one other thing that would be beneficial, if we do cancel this public hearing and reschedule it for another date, is the Governor's Executive Order that came out last week will give us more breathing room with regard to testimony, because that executive order eliminates the requirement for oral testimony in any proceeding in which written testimony can be achieved. So, Owen, I remember we talked about this several weeks ago, how do we provide an opportunity for any of these folks who want to testify? Now, with the Governor's Executive Order, we, the opportunity to provide testimony can be writ, in written form, either submitted, hard copy, or email, so that nobody will have to show up at a meeting.
Okay. I think that works for me. It makes sense to make sure that the different affected parties have the chance to respond, so.
Commissioner Roger Roger, it would be great to continue to hear the rest of the background about the Judy Lane potential district anyway, so that we can be prepared for a future bulletin. And thank you very much for mentioning that. Mark Vick.
Okay, so, no problem. So, let's see, what else? So the, what the applicant ended up, the improvements that were required, they extended Judy Lane as a public road, they did some hard circling, chip steel, and paving, they widened the road, they dealt with drainage improvements, and also as part of their requirements, they instructed an emergency access road at the end of the road, connecting it to Foster Road in case of emergency. The, like it said, there were, let's see, there were three parcels out there that benefited from it. The, in the packet, we have a map showing the parcels that were going to be included in the reimbursement district. And then I heard back, the applicant, and, all right, one second. So Jeff Doyle and Matt Shiner, who is, they are parcel, parcel one, partitioned class, they were, so that was a big one on the top, they were going to be included. The applicant has requested that that parcel be removed, so the only remaining parcels to be included in the reimbursement district are going to be 75 and 76. The way we calculated the cost for the reimbursement fee is the total cost of all of the improvements that the Doyle's performed, divided by the total number of developable lots. The, one other thing that happened, so they did the, their work between, it started in 2010 and finished in, end of 2016. And they were working with a previous staff person on forming the district, and for whatever reason, it didn't, it was never finalized. And so what brought this back up was in 20, end of 2018, one of the, another parcel was developing, and the staff person who was dealing with it on our end took a job with City of Albany, and just fell through the cracks, and what ended up happening for that, that development was, we required additional drainage improvements along the road. So if you, if you're ever seeing the map, that's 2200 on the bottom, the reason it's not included is because we required them to do separate drainage improvements, and the district hasn't informed us at the time of their improvement. I think that's the gist of it. If you guys have questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them.
This is Laurel. The only thing that I wanted to add is the reason why the Doyles and the Shiners requested to remove that lot, 3700, because in the, the cost of the lot, they paid for those road improvements. So the Doyle feel like they were reimbursed for those improvements.
Correct.
Laurel, in other words, this was their own work, and so they would be, kind of paid themselves, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And that makes sense. The only, my understanding from reading your report is that the lot, lot one's divided, and if it's divided, they might want to have the buyer, the subdivision, then pay a portion of the cost, but they decide that that wasn't worth it?
We, we were gonna, so the way that we calculated the cost was based on the number of developable lots. And so right now, since it, since it can be divided, we were counting it as two, and what the applicant is saying is they, when it was just one, they probably, it was already included in their improvements, and so when they sold it, they advertised it as they've already done their improvement. And so, they feel like it's reflected in the cost that they have already, and they don't want to be charged against it. And the applicant agrees with that, and it'll be removed again.
Okay. Okay, now I understand, thank you. And I appreciate the explanation of why it just fell off the radar for two years. That was one of my questions.
Yeah.
Not two years, four.
Right. So it's kind of, that was, I think, a failure on our part. I don't know exactly what happened early on, but Jeff has been working with me, and taken a long time for even meeting him to get it done. So, that's a failure on my part, I believe.
Okay. Owen, I appreciate the background. I think, if there are more questions, well, first things first, how do we remove the public hearing from our agenda?
That's easy. You just remove it from the agenda.
All right. So, and then, get back to us when your ducks are all lined up in a row, and we will reschedule this for another board meeting.
Vance, do you need a motion at all?
I would reschedule this for May 5th, if you'd like.
Assuming that gives enough time for the notice, because Owen, I think, isn't there a timeframe required between the date of the notice and the date of the hearing for persons that have an opportunity to provide testimony?
Yes, we have to send it out, I believe, 10 days in advance by certified mail.
So.
But with, with it being the pandemic and the PO box, I wasn't sure if that was adequate time or not.
Yeah, exactly. So maybe, Teresa, the following meeting that's available, so what would that be, the 19th of May?
That's correct.
That is the 19th of May.
Yeah, that, that just seems a more prudent date. That way, it allows Owen plenty of time to get the notice out. How's that sound, Owen? It sounds great, Vance.
Yep.
I was gonna say, because if you count 10 days, calendar days, and weekdays, or business days, the fifth would be the 10th day, but the 19th is open.
I should do the 19th, yeah.
Listen to the 19th. And we're correct.
Okay, great. So we will move on to item six, the consent calendar.
I was moving the consent calendar. One second, Pat, I was a little distracted by the musical chairs happening on screen.
We've asked Lilia to sit, but she just can't sit still.
All in favor of a motion for approving the consent calendar, say aye. Aye.
Did you have a quick question?
Yes.
In respect of minutes? We just approved the minutes from March 17th, board meetings, there was also a 911 on County Service District meeting that day, but those minutes weren't included, and I had a citizen request for those minutes, so I just was wondering when the Service District meeting, meeting minutes might be complete, with a lot of M's. Thanks.
Erica?
Those are, as I say, those should be complete, and they're in the packet, so usually what happens is that when you have the next 911 CSD meeting, that's when they're approved, but we are happy to send them out prior to that and to put drafts on them, so they're approved.
Got it, and, yeah, I was able to just say that we approved the items as they were presented and share the agenda again, but yes, thank you for reminding me of that process, and I will, I will request them next time if this becomes an issue. There's a lot of entries in the 911 district.
And again, if somebody wants a minute, you can just send me the name and the email, and then I can go ahead and send those off for you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to item seven, proclamations. 7.1, in the matter of proclaiming May 4th, 2020 as wildfire community preparedness day in Benton County. Are you there, Inga?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay, cool. Okay, in the matter of proclaiming May 2nd, 2020 as wildfire community preparedness day in Benton County, wildfire, wildfire community preparedness day will be observed on May 2nd, 2020, to recognize the residents, communities, and neighborhoods in Benton County who engage in wildfire mitigation activities as they work to create communities that are more resilient and safer from loss due to wildfires. And let us recognize that each of us can do our part to prepare for wildfire emergencies by taking steps to affect, to make effective changes to our landscapes and homes. And all residents are encouraged to recognize the importance of wildfire prevention efforts and work together to enhance our resilience and readiness, which is important every year, but especially important this year when our first responders are hampered by epidemic requirements and smoke could create dire respiratory problems. And all residents are encouraged to respect issued warnings and regulated burn periods and refrain from engaging in activities that would ignite a wildfire. And now therefore, the Board of Commissioners proclaims May 2nd, 2020 as wildfire community preparedness day in Benton County, and invite everyone to join together to recognize and participate in this special observance.
Thank you. Inga, are there any questions or comments?
I would move adoption of this, of the resolution.
All right.
Second, and thank you, Inga, I look forward to the wildfire protection plan development, or redevelopment update.
Yes, would be nice to be able to get, want to work on that.
All right, so, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Proclamation is approved, and thank you, Inga, and hopefully we'll get some more rain this spring and not have such a heavy wildfire season this, this summer. All right. 7.2, in the matter of proclaiming April 2020 as historical preservation month, and Inga Williams, you're up again.
Okay. Proclamation number P 2020-005, historic preservation month will be observed during May 2020 in Benton County. Historic preservation is a valuable tool for maintaining community character, promoting sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, and fostering local pride. And delving into our history helps us learn how to proceed forward with greater humanity and humility. And preservation and adaptive reuse of historic buildings is an environmentally sustainable practice that encourages community reinvestment and promotes socially, culturally, and economically rich communities. And Benton County's theme for historic preservation month is comfort in the enduring past, which encourages people to cherish our history as lasting examples that our legacy will endure beyond the challenges and distress of current times. And programs held during preservation month will be limited by necessity, but the county will endeavor to commemorate our history with solo-oriented events and web-based informative experiences that will offer education and entertainment. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners proclaims May 2020 as historic preservation month in Benton County, and invite everyone to join together to recognize and participate in this special observance.
All right, thank you, Inga.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments?
I would move approval of the proclamation of May 2020 as historic preservation month in Benton County. Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, and thank you, Inga.
You're welcome, thank you.
It is a quick comment. Tomorrow is, of course, Earth Day, although because we're not gathering and there are not any big events, it seems like it's gonna come and go with a little bit of a whimper. Just wanted to acknowledge that, acknowledge the work of our sustainability team.
Great. So we are slightly ahead of schedule, and see if we can do something in number eight, or.
Let's check in to see if Danielle and Charlie are in the line yet.
Are Danielle and Charlie with us?
This is Charlie, I'm here.
How about Danielle?
If Danielle's not here, we should go to 8.1, because Danielle needs to be part of the conversation.
Charlie, I think we'll wait for Danielle to join us, just let me know, and we'll take up other matters till she gets here. But as soon as, soon as she gets here, we will.
Danny, bye.
Okay, thank you. We will go to Department of Reports, 8.1. Gary Stockoff and Dave Malone on the slope easement on the Star Creek Road project. Gary and Dave?
Good morning, Commissioner, this is Dave Malone. I assume you're hearing me okay?
Great.
Sure can.
Great, okay. 8.1 is regarding Star Creek, the project that we've been working on to improve the road for the Community Wildfire Protection Plan to connect Hell's Canyon to Star Creek. Just a follow-up item from the first phase of the construction, we have received signed easements from a landowner, one is where we decided easements from a landowner, one is where we decided to extend a culvert a little bit longer than originally planned to help with maintenance and to keep the water a little farther from the Tobuk fill, and so we asked for an easement for that culvert, which they granted. We also took a little bit more off of one slope than originally planned, because we were trying to gain a little bit more fill material, and they agreed to that, and we finally got around to getting the slope easement for that. So what we're requesting today is just that the county board accept those two easements from that landowner.
Any questions?
Questions?
For Dave.
Just one question, I recall that back a couple of years ago, maybe it was, we got some dollars through the SRS program, is that what, were those used for that particular project?
Is, I'm not sure what the name of that, is that the BLM that was granting that money?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, they granted...
They gave them, yes.
Yeah, they granted some money for materials, which we used in the rock that we were putting on the road. I did not check in with George Looney and Finance to see, last time I talked to him, they were just working through the process of getting that money from that grant, but it was definitely in the works to receive that money, and we have already spent that money on the rock and other material that we did up there.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we followed up on that, because it was a, it was a touch of change.
Correct, yes. Any other questions?
The only other question I would have is not related directly to these easements, it's just a future schedule for completion of this project, or is that still being developed?
We, yeah, we, actually I've been out there a couple of times this week, or this week and last week, we have advertised for the next phase to be constructed by a contractor, and we are hoping tomorrow, actually, to do a pre-bid walkthrough, I did not check in to see if that was still on the schedule for tomorrow, but we are planning on a June first start date for this final phase.
Did you get that information?
I'm sorry? I think we've got somebody else's.
Yeah, I need to go too. So tomorrow's pre-bid walkthrough is hoping for a June start for that phase?
That's correct, yeah.
And we're on the project?
Yes, that should by the end of this summer, we should be completed with the project.
Okay. And by shifting to an outside contractor, is that going to increase expenses significantly?
To be honest, I'm not sure, we'd want to talk to Laurel buyer probably on that one, as a surveyor, I was dealing more with the easements and layout.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions about the easement.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that look, one second.
Moved by Annabelle, seconded by Zan, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right. Star Creek project has been approved, next up, eight point two, terminating trail easement granted by Greenbelt Land Trust.
We have Danielle here now.
Okay, switch over.
Danielle and Charlie, Joe Kirby, are both of you ready to move forward with your topic over the course of the next twenty minutes?
Yes, I think, looks like Danielle is on now.
Danielle, can you hear us?
Yes, and I've also asked Sarah Hartstein to join us.
Great, okay, so Dave, unfortunately, we're going to need to park eight point two for about twenty minutes, as we need to address another issue, so if you can continue to stay on the line, we'd appreciate it, or rejoin us in fifteen or twenty minutes.
No problem, I'll just sit here patiently waiting, I know that sometimes timelines get in the way.
Thank you for your patience.
Thanks, Dave. All right, we're skipping ahead to item ten, emergency response policy team, take it away.
Danielle, you're up.
Okay, thanks. So as you guys know, Sarah and I have been working with the EOC for the last several weeks to get some policies, or processes rather, identified for one of our work groups, which is hotel motel sheltering for individuals who are homeless and either at risk or have tested positive for COVID-19. So our request this morning is to move forward with requesting reimbursement from FEMA for funding the hotel motel sheltering for those target individuals. I, we forwarded you guys a document late yesterday, and I have an updated document that I don't think I've gotten to you yet this morning, so I apologize for that, but that has costs identified on it in terms of what our projected expenses are related to hotel motel sheltering for the individuals who are experiencing homelessness. I believe the ask that you guys have indicates it's worth fifty-eight thousand dollars, which includes five motel rooms for individuals who have tested positive for COVID-19, four who are symptomatic and awaiting test results, and ten hotel rooms for individuals who are considered medically fragile and are CDC high-risk category, that will allow for shelter in place in isolation to manage those individuals from being exposed to essential COVID infection. The updated request that I've asked, that I've added to, that I will forward to you guys, also includes a reimbursement ask for access to utilize the Fairgrounds campsite that we have currently available, where we would waive the fees for those, and ask for FEMA reimbursement for the fee waivers for individuals who are car or RV camping, to be able to access those and have a safe place to car or RV camp during the COVID outbreak and COVID emergency. Sarah, you've done a lot of the work on this, so I'll let you expand on the details.
Thanks, Danielle, I think you did a great job of outlining what the FEMA reimbursement ask looks like, and I just want to add that in addition to what we're asking FEMA reimbursement for, we've also engaged with planning with many of our social service providers around what case management would look like for individuals in hotel motel sheltering and potentially utilizing Fairgrounds camp sites in addition to meal delivery, room supplies, and potentially medical rounding. Currently, Chance Recovery with funding through CFC is already placing individuals who fall within that medically vulnerable category into hotel rooms in all three of our counties, Lincoln, Benton, and Lynn, and we're hoping to strengthen our collaboration around that and so that we have more of a seamless approach and plan to the support of those individuals who are needing hotel or motel sheltering, or a place to park their RV or car. In addition to those venues, we've also been in planning with folks around the use of microshelters that are already placed on properties within Corvallis, so whether that looks like isolating someone until we can get them into a hotel room, or rather motel room, or if that means placing individuals who are in that medically vulnerable category, and again, being really thoughtful about where individuals are placed, and not mixing COVID positive or awaiting test results with individuals who are in that medically fragile category.
I also will add, thank you, Sarah, I also will add that we have been in conversations with IHNCCO around helping to fund some of those, those conversations are still happening, so there haven't been any, any direct movement forward with that, those conversations are still happening in terms of helping to support the population with some funds for hotel motel sheltering.
I do have a question.
Zan?
I really appreciate how far this whole conversation has come along, and that we have some concrete proposals and concrete actions that we will be able to support in coordination with all of our community partners. I do know that there's still kind of an outstanding issue, and that is that the sanitation functions that the mental sheltering has been providing here in South Corvallis will probably lapse in early May, because that's the end of their typical shelter season, they don't have funding to operate through the summer, and they can't continue to provide that function for all of those that are living rough without funding. So is that something that the EOC and the health department are also working on, and if so, do you expect to bring a proposal to us on that front as well?
We were just talking about that this morning, and I'll let Danielle respond to that question.
Yeah, thanks, Sarah, we were literally just talking about that within about the last thirty minutes, and recognizing that is going to be a pretty significant gap of barrier if that sanitation center is no longer functioning, so yes, our intention is to bring a proposal, hopefully next week, beginning of next week, to the Commissioners for some funding for that. Like I said, we just literally had this conversation, so we're not very far down that road, but our intention is to get that to you hopefully by next Tuesday.
Excellent, thank you, I really appreciate it.
Any other questions on this sheltering issue?
Charlie, do you have anything you would like to contribute, and then the second question I have is Danielle, what specifically are you asking from the Board this morning, if anything?
I, this, I don't have anything else to offer, one of the, one of the requirements of this was a shelter order from the county health officer, and we did process that, Bruce has a signed order that is included as part of the submission packet.
I have one further question, and that is the duration of this is thirty days, and of course, we don't really know what our timeline is with respect to the coronavirus, but what would, what will be the process if we need to extend this beyond a thirty-day period?
Brian, are you on, and can you speak to what the process would be to extend that? I am not entirely clear about that.
I am, I am on, so the process basically would be, we'd have to fill out another, it's basically the same proposal that they've already put together, and some basic specification on why we want to extend it, and then we submit that to the state again for pre-approval. So this would be something like around day, you know, twenty, twenty-one, that we would want to have ready to go if we're thinking we're going to need to extend it, and then fire it off, so we can get pre-approval before the first thirty days last, and then we can do thirty-day chunks, and that's what FEMA asks for.
Okay, that's great, and I know that some of the questions are also talking about case rim off, and so what happens when we return to quote-unquote normal, and these helpless individuals, do we just drop them? So I hope that...
No, I...
Are being in advance with our, with the community and service providers to think about a transition plan, a soft landing, however we want to put it, Louis, go over.
Yeah, absolutely, I think that's why the case management team is going to be integral to this being successful, is to be able to provide that case management while the folks are sheltered someplace, to help identify permanent or long-term shelter options for them, recognizing that it is really just bad practice to give someplace, give somebody a place for a short term and just, as you said, drop them, that's definitely not something we want to do, and the case management is going to be pivotal in making sure that status is the case.
Thank you, and case management, in this case, is that going to be provided by Benton County, by Benton County, or by one of the other service providers, or a combination?
There'll be a combination, at this point, Corvallis Housing First and CFC have taken the lead on providing that case management, of course Benton County will help, will help support that in whatever way makes sense, but at this point, they're agreeing to do that case management, that's the primary support.
Thank you.
Danielle, can you once again clarify if you're asking for any specific direction from the Board, or any specific approval by the, formal approval by the Board this morning, or were you just updating them?
Thanks, Joe, no, at this point, we're updating them and wanting to make sure that the Commissioners are aware of the request that we're submitting to FEMA, hopefully we'll get that submitted today, I don't know that there is formal, a formal motion that needs to happen, but we definitely wanted to make sure that the Commissioners were aware of the progress that has been made and the motion, or excuse me, the documentation that will be submitted today.
Answering your question?
Is this, sorry?
Right?
Is no, is formal motion needed to progress that forward up to the state, as Danielle mentioned, we just wanted to let you guys know we are doing that, to more, keep you updated on where our process, but as far as I understand, there's no formal motion needed by the Board.
Okay, one last question, the hotel motel process of working with Chance has already begun, and so I'm assuming that this will all become active as, just as we can, we'll set it up as we can, as this letter is moving forward with the state?
Correct, yeah, we don't want to duplicate anything that Chance has already created, we want to create some pathways, what I expect is that Chance will need some additional support, I know that Jeff Blackburn from Chance has been working far more than any one person should, so I expect that we'll need some support, he'll need some support through that, Sarah and I have talked about having a county staff member be sort of the coordinator, so to speak, so that there's some tracking on the county's end of who's where, and how that's being managed to help support this progress, I do think Chance will need some additional support, I don't think they can do it all, and that may be, you know, helping to provide, you know, the food or whatever the case may be, but yeah, we do recognize that Chance already has a process in place, and will need to support that, and not create parallel processes. Thank you.
Well, we really appreciate your efforts in assembling a team and getting partners and assembling things on the fly, so thank you very much for your efforts.
Commissioner Malone, we could do one of two things, we could go to Brian Lee for his EOC status update, right now Brian does not have any policy questions for the Board today, but he does have an update, so we could do that now, if we did that now, that would finish out item ten on your agenda, and then we could go back to eight point two, or you can wait, ask Brian to wait and go back to eight point two now.
Brian, why don't you jump in and update us on your efforts?
Okay, sounds great, so the main thing actually this week is, we are actually looking at breaking down a lot of the functions in the EOC, and have the folks who are currently on standby still, so we're ready to ramp up, we're working on some trigger points to ramp back up again, and specifically, we're looking at Good Samaritan stacking and TPC numbers, as well as their search capacity, so right now, they're reporting out on their status daily, twice a day, and letting us know that they're basically, their statuses are yellow or green, depending on which category, and when... yellow or green depending on which category. And when they hit those yellow categories, we're thinking that would be one of our triggers to ramp back up. So we'll be constantly in contact with them and paying attention. Other than that, been working with Andy and Lori Starha a lot regarding the EOC staff kind of orientation as we begin freely learning to do some training. We are in a little bit of a wall. I'm sure Charlie and Danielle are cringing to hear that. But sure that EOC operations, things are, at least this week and that's part of last week, kind of flatlined. And we're expecting that to go back up again, but things are pretty stable in this precise moment. And I predict that Charlie will have some more work for us and more coordination that we can support here moving forward. So next week, I kind of mentioned it to the department directors yesterday, we are looking at sort of our transition. I try not to use the word recovery since we're still in the operations. However, lack of better words, and I'll say recovery. In other words, we want to open, case courses are being involved, but we want to open more of an economic development component and a sort of longer term projection of what this EOC structure will look like over the next month or two months and what the need for staffing is as well as staffing operational focused folks versus mainly having public health support and economic support. So we're just starting to kind of piece that together and develop plans and ideas for that. And that's all I have left.
Great. Any questions or comments for Brian?
I have one. Actually, it's back to Charlie because in terms of the reopening, of course, one of the main things that is a concern is the two things, testing and contact tracing. Where are we in terms of discussions with respect to contact tracing and investigations? Do we have additional search capacity available there now? What's that looking like?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. We've been looking hard at, you know, we've been doing contact tracing all along. It's something we always do for every communicable disease. We were looking at the surge and really watching the testing capacity open up. It actually takes quite a while, just even without contact tracing. We get every one of these test results, whether they're positive or negative, we have to hand enter those into the state data system. We get them electronically, but they don't automatically upload into the state data system. So that takes, you know, fifteen or twenty minutes per test, a little bit less if you get enrolled. Contact tracing is actually pretty long. The initial discussion with people who test positive is often an hour long, you know, seldom less than a half hour. People are worried. They've got a lot of questions. We do a lot of case management. We do a lot of community resource connections. It's very time consuming. So looking at, you know, and even with now six people in the communicable disease team as opposed to two, we're getting pretty close to matched out. And now looking, this Samaritan is hoping by the end of this week, looking at the capacity they have at the state lab and through Legacy, at being able to test anyone who comes into any of their system with any symptoms. So really opening up their criteria, not testing asymptomatic people, but anyone with allergies, anyone with a cough, anyone with a fever for any reason, even if they're pretty sure they have another diagnosis, will almost certainly be screened for COVID as well and the chance that they may have two infections or something else going on. So that's going to significantly increase our load. And then we're waiting, as you know, the OSU trace program did its pilot this last weekend. They did twelve homes. There were, there were a couple that were not occupied. You know, they're selecting these homes on maps randomly. But they, they did get, I think seventeen people who agreed, about ninety percent of the people they approached, agreed to be tested. So they were just testing out their methodology. They are looking today at what their outreach training is and will decide today or tomorrow whether they go to full scale this weekend or the following weekend. We're anticipating that they will do that this weekend. That'll be another nine hundred and sixty tests a week, plus they're testing all of their outreach workers every week. So, you know, it's over, you know, well over a thousand tests just from them a week that will need to enter in and then an unknown proportion of those will be positive. So yes, we are looking at internal capacity initially. We have a plan. I've been in touch already with, with Brian and Ken, Danielle and Sarah about who is trained to do contact tracing and CD investigation elsewhere in the health department and reassigning them in and basically, you know, it puts pressure on the EOC because that's a set of people that then from public health would not be available to the EOC. But longer term, this is going to go on for likely months. And so as you heard undoubtedly in your discussions with the governor's office, over the last week, CLO and OHA made a proposal that's being presented today to the governor for ongoing testing and contact tracing capacity. thumbnail guess, lowball guess, I think, is that statewide will need five hundred more investigators. I know that the state of Massachusetts is putting out advertisements today for, I think it's six thousand tracers in their state. And so I think what we're looking at in Oregon is regionalizing this. And I've already had discussions with Lincoln and Lynn about the possibility of doing that. We've done outreach to OSU. We've got other resources, a whole bunch of other potential volunteers that have reached out. So, you know, one of our first resources internally is environmental health because they're very familiar with contact tracing, know how to do investigation, already have access to the communicable disease databases. But as things start opening up in the state and restaurants start opening up under modified emergency rules and start doing sit-down service or expanding their services and other food service and they need to get back to regulatory, we've got this other Plan B to implement a more regionalized statewide system. So we're working on it, but I think this is what Brian was alluding to when he said public health is really going to get slammed in the next two operational periods and going to need to be nimble to, to respond to that need. That was long, but
Thank you. Yes, long, but yeah, I can see where the bottleneck is. And yeah, it's a big one. Let us know what we can do to help.
Thank you.
Charlie, the potential five hundred people needed, will some of that be internal transfers or is that five hundred new people into the system?
I think it will depend, Commissioner, sort of on region by region and department by department. Certainly, you know, if we have underutilized people within our, our system, within the county, I've had these discussions with Danielle, I think there's no question that behavioral health staff who are already very good communicators and used to working with people in high stress situations, if they're being underutilized in their current programs and with our philosophy of, you know, trying to avoid any, any furloughs or having people underutilized within the county system, we'd certainly look to that first. Our assumption statewide that five hundred is basically additional staff, assuming that things, like I was talking about environmental health, other systems start ramping up. And so it'll probably be a mix, you know, initially utilizing more internal resources. As other internal programs ramp up, we may actually, we'll almost unlikely, undoubtedly, as we go into summer and late summer and into fall and other programs are fully ramped up, we'll probably need to add outside resources to maintain this effort into the next cold and flu season.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Joe?
Commissioner, I would like to interject. If you look at our agenda under new business, section nine point one, there is an agenda item there that is under Brian Lee's name relative to the notice of intent for a grant application for coronavirus emergency supplemental funding. So we actually do have an agenda item on there. I don't know if Brian is still on the phone or not, or if Danielle, you're still there?
Brian.
Okay, Brian. So we actually have a, a formal agenda item for approval on the agenda. So I believe that you forwarded that to Teresa or somebody did from the EOC. So we should go ahead and accomplish that agenda item while Brian and Danielle are still on the phone.
Yes. So the bottom line is the grant is actually a BJA Bureau of Justice Administration grant. It's targeted towards law enforcement and first responders. And basically it covers, it's fifty-eight thousand dollars from federal government and it's covering costs of PPE or medical supplies if we have medical supplies that we use and needed, as well as training and various other pieces of equipment. This is actually, after talking with Don Dale, who's chatting with Greg and Scott a bit about it, this is where we were going to put that H2O sterilization unit. And we're going to get a couple of the smaller units that we could utilize in different vehicles or rooms to reuse PP if we need to and clean all kinds of other equipment. So that was kind of the intent of the grant. It also did allow for things like laptops for first responders. So for example, a lot of our deputies don't have a laptop that they can use. They have their, their little mobile station that they utilize, but that's kind of tied to their car often. So we were going to get a couple of laptops possibly if there was enough money extra towards the EOC that then they could also use if they go to training and have some of the emergency response function. So that's the intent of the grant. It's only fifty-eight thousand dollars. And that kind of popped up out of nowhere, so to speak. The state didn't know much about it either, but we got it through Oregon State Sheriff Association. That's how we were notified about it.
Okay. Brian, does this require any matching dollars?
It does not. It's actually a two-year grant cycle and it does not require any matching funds at all. And it's actually backdated to January twentieth. So we bought a lot of PPE, hand sanitizers, various things, like various things for the office for our deputies to make sure that they would not, you know, get infected with COVID-19. And all of those supplies are reimbursable through this grant. So there is no matching.
Great. And so you are proceeding on the fogging cleaning systems. It sounds like you, you figured out the models that you want to buy, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, we are doing a part of the models. The shortest version is that there's smaller units that can basically sterilize like a car or an ambulance side. And then there's bigger units that can do a small room. We were going to get several different sizes, but a couple of smaller units, maybe one of the medium sized units. But we had more flexibility where we just combined them all to do a bigger space or have them separated at various locations as needed. So that was kind of what we're thinking right now to use this grant for.
Okay. And what kind of lag time after you order the units to get them here?
They vary rapidly. Some of the smaller units were actually only a three week lead time. The bigger unit was more on the seven to twelve week lead time. So it's, it's still a bit, which again is why we're thinking this grant would almost be better than the FEMA funding reimbursement process because we could, right now, we're really actually doing okay with PPE. So our thought was get this sterilization equipment with this grant because even if it arrives for next fall or next cycle around, we would still get reimbursed on it. It's a hundred percent and we'd have the units available for use for other purposes as well if needed.
Great. Zan?
Do you need a motion on this, this notice of intent?
Yep, I do.
I would move the call with this notice of intent for the BJA funding with eight thousand. Second?
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye. And Greg Riddler, were you trying to say something?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Were you trying to speak at the same time that I was?
No, I was not. I'm just listening. It sounded very good. Thank you.
Great, Brian. This, this sounds like a good, a good catch and helps, helps our effort. And thank you for hopefully finding some money for us.
Absolutely.
Good morning, everyone. Just information. I came on a couple minutes later. Ken McCarthy, I'm on the phone as well, just listening in.
Morning, Ken.
Good morning.
Anything else or go back to?
I think we go, if Brian is done, if Chief McCarthy wants to add anything, and then go back to eight point two.
Okay. Anything else for Brian or Danielle or Charlie or Sarah?
I would, I would give the opportunity to take McCarthy if he wants to add me if he considers the EOC director here this week, if he had any other updates from the EOC that I may admit.
Okay. Chief?
I came in, I came in a little bit late, so I don't want to repeat a bunch of stuff. I will say that some really good work has been done. There's a lot of really good plans that are ninety-five percent ready to a hundred percent done, that we can pull off the shelf as needed. We have downsized a few people this week and are looking at potentially bringing a couple of new branches into the operations sections going forward, more with a recovery focus, always with an eye on ramping back up if the need requires.
Okay. Brian didn't touch on, touch on that a little bit, but that's just, I appreciate the, that this, the EOC is evolving and sounds like for the most part, keeping up with the emergencies and being able to take a little, little bit of a peek ahead to the recovery phase. So I, I think the joint EOC is working like it's supposed to or maybe even better than imagined. So thank you for all your efforts.
No worries.
Go ahead.
I would add that it has gone really well for first activation and the training and a lot of people coming in who weren't even part of any of the training. There's absolutely been a couple of hiccups along the way. That's to be expected, but overall a really good operation.
Great.
And I echo that as well.
Well, thanks, Brian and Chief McCarthy. If there's nothing else for those folks, we'll circle back to Public Works and Dave Malone, eight point two, terminating a portion of trail easement with Green Belt Land Trust.
Thank you. Always interesting to hear what's going on in the EOC. We appreciate those guys doing all that work for us. I haven't spent a day there. I know they get pulled in a lot of directions. So the easement we're dealing with is on the Bald Hill Mulkey Ridge over to Fitting Green Trail system. In two thousand and four, Andrew Martin granted Benton County some trail easements there. Green Belt Land Trust acquired that property from Andrew Martin. And one of those easements was on a gravel farm access road. The Green Belts rebuilt the trail off to the side of the road to remove the pedestrians and bicyclists from the vehicular access. And as part of that, they wanted to grant us a new easement where that new trail is and have us terminate a portion of the old easement that was on the farm access road. And so that's what those two documents do. The termination of trail easements trail easement document would get recorded first because that document number needs to go on to the second document, the new trail easement. But it's pretty straightforward. Do you have any questions for me on those?
I don't have any. Sounds pretty straightforward and a nice public-private partnership. If there's no further questions for Dave, I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we accept the new trail easement and the determination of the old trail easement. Second?
All in favor of the, this motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Thank you, Dave. And now we'll move on to 8.3, annexation of territory to the Flemish Fire and Rescue District.
Okay. I believe this one came up because the fire district was reviewing some maps and found this property about, the southern part of the property had been annexed into the fire district when the fire district was first created. But the northern part of the property never was annexed into it, and that is where the house actually is. This property is also completely surrounded by the Flemish Fire District. It's just this one little, remaining little island that wasn't in it. And since the house was not covered officially, they're working through the process of getting this annexed into the fire district. The landowner submitted the petition and he's in agreement with this. The fire district is in agreement with this and they met all the requirements. And so now we're just trying to get it finalized by having the board approve that. Any other questions or any comments?
Seems fairly straightforward and like the last motion, just trying to catch up our books with what's out there. So that, I appreciate getting this taken care of. If there are no other, no questions for Dave, I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the petition for annexation of territory to the Flemish Fire and Rescue District. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Well, Dave, thanks for your flexibility in taking care of these things. And if there's nothing else, you can get back to work.
All right. Thank you for having me this morning.
Thank you. All right. Well, my agenda says we are on other. Do we have any other other? Any other other?
Other.
Other. Hearing none, I will close the board meeting. And now we go to Ag Extension Services.
You have, you have the service districts?
We have two.
We're reopening our, okay. I would like to open Benton County Agricultural Extension Services County Service District Governing Board meeting. Do we have any comments from the public? If not, we'll move on to item two, the consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any other business for the district? Hearing none, we will move on to the, I will, I close the Ag Extension Service District and, and opening the Hidden Valley Domestic Water Supply County Service District Governing Board. Do we have any comments from the public? Hearing none, item two is the consent calendar.
Move the consent calendar. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the consent calendar, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
That's, the consent calendar is approved. Is there any other business for the Hidden Valley Domestic Water Supply Service District? Hearing none, I close the service district meeting. I think that's it for today. See you Thursday.